In 2024 meeting, this meeting and the hearing that will be considered is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Now unless she has changed her mind, this is Kim's last meeting. And Kim has been on the zoning board for 13 years. It seems like just yesterday though, doesn't it? For 13 years. And during that time, you know, I think we've really benefited from, from her service and even more so from her friendship. We're certainly, I think, a better board now than we were 13 years ago. And a lot of that is, you know, due to, you know, Kim's assistance. You know, one of the things I could always count on before a meeting was that Kim was prepared, that she had read the materials, that she had looked at the property, she had her questions in mind, her comments in mind, and she would keep an open mind as the hearing would go on. But I would always know that she was prepared. Another thing I could count on was that there would be, particularly when it was a complex matter, at least one question or one comment that Kim would make that would pretty much crystallize what we're dealing with, put everything in, in perfect clarity. And nine times out of 10, I would sit here and say, damn, why didn't I think of that? So it's, it's been, for me personally, a, an honor and, and a privilege and a delight to have served with you. I appreciate all of your assistance and all of your support and most of all for helping, helping it make like I know what I'm talking about every meeting. So thank you very much. You'll be missed. Hopefully this will not be the end of our friendship and we'll be able to see you. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. I appreciate.
No, we're not done yet.
The kind words.
This looks like it's coming from maybe a foreign country here.
Oh.
Nothing that exotic, just very good.
I enjoy the shape of the bag already. Can I, I can open this now? I can open this later?
We can open it here.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lovely. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And in a manner of speaking, this is also coming from a foreign country, but it's a lot closer, it's in Rentham.
All right, thank you. I will open this. Should I open this now? I can open this later?
You can open it, whatever you want, Kim.
Okay. I might open this later just because I know we have things to get to. And I do have a couple of things that I wanted to say, which I wrote down. If this, I can do this at the end of the meeting, I can do this now, but I know we have people in front of us.
Frank, Frank knows that we're going to do this.
Okay. So I don't want to, I don't want to take up too much time. But I did write a few things down so that I wouldn't forget. I just wanted to say that I've learned so much over the years. I really have enjoyed the time, the challenges, the different board members that we've had over the years. But two especially stand out in my mind. One, Dave Brown, and another Neil Forrester, who both passed away. Really miss them both. They were just such lovely people to serve with. I'm grateful to the different chairs. It has been my pleasure to serve under, but especially Barney. It is rare to find your combination of intelligence, kindness, grace, knowledge, professionalism, and a steady hand in one person. You are a blessing to this town and to this board. Barney's leadership has set the tone for civility, support, and respect. We may disagree, but we do so with respect and affection. And thanks to each of the members and to Scott and especially Diana for patiently answering my countless questions over the years in all the visits that where I stand next to your desk. And to future ZBA members, I highly recommend this board. You will learn a lot and enjoy the board's camaraderie. It really is a special spot. And thank you to all the select board members for appointing and reappointing me over the years and especially to Linda Walsh in 2011, who after the board discussed my application in a meeting was the one to say, I nominate her, as my heart pounded out of my chest. Thank you for taking the chance on me. So thank you to all of you. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, the time being 7:00 PM. 31-39 South Street LLC seeks special permits pursuant to Section 5.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning. One, to allow the change or extension of pre-existing non-conforming parking uses at 31-35 South Street and 37-39 South Street. And two, a special permit under Section 5.2.1 to allow the change or extension of the pre-existing non-conforming nine-family dwelling use at 37-39 South Street to a 12-family dwelling use and a special permit under Section 5.3.2 and a finding under Section 5.3.5 to allow the alteration or structural change of or to a pre-existing non-conforming structure that results in a non-conforming structure being used for the same purpose or use to a substantially greater extent. And three, any other special permits, findings, and/or variances that may be required. Subject properties located in the General Business Zoning District and the Foxborough Centre Overlay District.
Good evening. Attorney Frank Splain, representing the applicant and property owner again, 31-39 South Street LLC. Here with me this evening is James McClure, who is owner and manager of the 31-39 South Street LLC, as well as Chris Drew, who is the principal designer with 686 Architects. Did we get the plan?
It's not working.
It's not working? Okay. So the plan is right over there in case anybody needs it. So again, you can just, the properties, there are two properties here, 31-35 and 37-39 South Street, which is in the General Business Zoning District, as well as the Foxborough Centre Overlay District. Both structures were built in the early 1900s and therefore were built in existence prior to zoning. Again, I'm sure everyone here knows the location. It's right across the street from Town Hall, up a little bit. The whole property used to be owned by the Lynch family. The applicant also purchased from the Lynch's a vacant lot on School Street, which is located between the Bank of America building and where they call it Group Inc. is, as well as a two-family dwelling on 6-8 Centennial Street, which is just located right behind the two structures. So all of those properties are all kind of located right beside each other. Again, the applicant is proposing to change or improve the pre-existing non-conforming parking at both locations, 31-35 and 37-39 South Street, and thereby requesting two special permits under Section 5.2.1, which allows the change or extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use parking. We're also proposing to change the use and the structure at 37-39 South Street, changing the use from a nine-family dwelling to a 12-family dwelling by converting, there are three existing garages which are located on the property, and we're going to convert those into three one-bedroom apartments. Again, the garages are on, facing Market Street, and we're using, are being used as kind of maintenance bays that were used by the Lynch's forever to maintain all their properties, and they're still being used as maintenance bays at this time, but there are three garages right side by side. And for that, we're requesting special permits under Section 5.2.1 and 5.3.2 to allow the change or extension of a, of the pre-existing non-conforming nine-family dwelling use to a 12-family dwelling use and to allow the alteration or structural change of or to the pre-existing non-conforming structure that results in the non-conforming structure being used for the same purpose or use, again, multifamily to a greater extent. So since we're increasing it, we also need the, and changing the structure, the garages to apartments, we need the 5.3.2 special permit. Under Section 5.2.1, Section 5.2.1 requires a special permit from the board to allow the change of the pre-existing non-conforming use. The board can grant such a use upon a finding that such change or extension shall not substantially, is not substantially more detrimental than an existing non-conforming parking use to the neighborhood. We believe it's going to be a benefit and we hope that you agree with that. Section 5.2.1 also is required, again, to change the nine-family use to a 12-family use, and again, the 5.3.2 to require the changing of the pre-existing non-conforming structure by enlarging that use. Under 5.3.2, we also have to show that there's no increase in any existing non-conformities. We're not increasing any non-conformities and doesn't create any new non-conformities. Again, the structure's not going to be changed in and of itself out or in, we're just changing the garages to apartments. Again, the board may grant such a special permit upon a finding that it, what we're requesting substantially, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use or the structure. I'll try to be brief on my overview of the, the two dwellings, but in summary, both dwellings do not meet any zoning. 37-39 South Street, again, is located on the corner of South and Market Street, so it has two front yards and two side yards. It contains a nine-unit family, multifamily dwelling. The lot is 9,125 square feet. It's 120 feet of frontage on Market Street and 90 feet of frontage on South Street. It's located 10 feet off of Market Street and zero feet off of South Street. The side yards are 19 feet on Market and two feet on South, on the side yard adjacent to South Street. And the parking for that property, as well as the other, is on the adjacent Centennial Street property, as well as the other South Street property and on the street. The nine-family dwelling was built again in the early 1900s and its height is just over 36 feet. The dwelling, again, is pre-existing non-conforming because the lot contains only 9,125 square feet, where 69,000 is required for a, for a nine-family dwelling, nine-unit multifamily dwelling. The lot contains 90 feet of frontage on South Street, where 100 feet is required, and 100 feet of frontage on Market Street, where 125 feet is required. 125 feet is required because it's a cross-residential. Again, the dwelling is 10 feet from Market Street and zero feet from South Street, where 50 feet is required. It's two feet from the side yard adjacent to South Street and 19 feet from the side yard adjacent to Market Street, where 25 is required on both sides, side yards. And again, the height is over 36 feet, where only 35 feet is allowed, and the lot width for the lot is not conforming, where 67 feet is required. Again, the dwelling contains nine dwelling units on a lot, and under our bylaws, no more than eight dwelling units are allowed on a lot. So again, the number of yards is pre-existing conforming. And the use lacks a special permit from the planning board as required under Table 3-1, so that is pre-existing non-conforming. Again, briefly, the existing parking on 37-39 South Street is pre-existing non-conforming because some of the parking is located on the adjacent lots and on the street, and under our bylaws, all parking is required to be on the same lot as the use. Some of the parking is located zero feet from the structure. Under our bylaws, it's required to be at least 20 feet off of the structure. Some of the parking spaces permit vehicles to park, to back up into the street, which is not allowed under our bylaws, and there's not enough parking that's required for those units. There are other non-complying sections, 618, 6194, 6195, 6196, 6110, 6111, and the table of uses, and I won't go through them all, but pretty much the parking is pre-existing non-conforming because it's anywhere on the lot, wherever you want it, right up against the building, side yards, everywhere. With regard to 31-35 South Street, which contains a family unit, four-unit multifamily dwelling, that lot contains 7,294 feet, has 66 feet of frontage on South Street. It's located 12 feet off of South Street. It's less than one feet from one side yard and eight feet from another and 43 feet from the rear yard. Again, the parking is located on, in, on its parcel and on the other parcels, as well as on the street. Again, this was built in the early 1900s and is just over 38 feet. So again, the dwelling on 31-35 South Street is pre-existing non-conforming because it only, the lot contains only 7,294 square feet, where 38,375 square feet is required for a four-unit family dwelling. The lot only contains 66 feet of frontage, where 100 feet is required. The dwelling is less than one foot from the southern side yard and eight feet from the northern side yard, where 25 feet is required. And the dwelling is 43 feet from the rear yard, where 75 feet is required. Again, the height is 38 feet, where only 35 feet is allowed, and a lot width is just not there, it's just not wide enough. Again, this is also pre-existing non-conforming use because it lacks the special permit from the planning board. The parking on 31-35 South Street is also pre-existing non-conforming for all the same reasons as the other one, so I won't go through all those. Again, we're proposing to improve the existing parking from the current allowed parking, and which is anywhere on the parcel, and this board actually came to that conclusion in case 0606, which I provided you, that, you know, stayed at that time, that you had made that determination, and that's pretty much what happens. They park anywhere they can right beside it, all over the lawn. The total number of parking spaces, which we will be providing on that, on our plan, is 23 spaces, which is more than is required under the Foxborough Centre Overlay District. Under those guidelines, we need, would need between 19 and 22 spaces. We're providing 23 spaces. But under Table 6-1, we would require 36 if we were going just under the general bylaw, so we're not going to be meeting that. We did meet with the planning board to review our proposal, to get any input from them, and they reviewed it on March 14th, and they sort of ordered the proposed parking plan with the 23 spaces. Again, we're also proposing converting the three garages at 37-39 South Street to three one-bedroom apartments. The conversion of those garages would be allowed with the development of a vacant lot on South Street. Once that lot is developed, we could include this building in it and convert those three garages into apartments at that time, under the Foxborough Centre Overlay District bylaws. For example, the fire station was converted as the restaurant on the first floor, apartments on the back, and the back building behind it is all apartments. So it'd be similar to that, same thing on Wall Street. So we could do that, under that guidelines. However, the owner applicant at this time isn't ready to do that development. So we wanted to try to, they wanted to try to continue with the renovations of these buildings. The interior of the buildings have already been all renovated, but for the three garage spaces, which are still as is. So what they want to do is clean up the exterior in simple terms. They want to improve the parking, put landscaping in, and redo the exterior. And I believe we've provided you with a plan showing the layouts of all the buildings. Again, they've all been done and we've gotten occupancy for all of them, I believe, for, for all those units, again, but for the garage spaces, which haven't been touched. So in looking at this, and they wanted to continue improving the exterior and the parking and all that, we thought this would be the best way to come in front of this board with these requests, and we went over all of that with the planning board also at their meeting on March 14th. They also reviewed our request for increase in residential units, and they stated that they were not opposed to converting the garage to apartments, and I believe you have a memo dated March 15th, 2024 stating as such. The applicant also has met with the design review board. Under the bylaw, certain streets in the downtown area have to meet with the design review board whenever you want to do anything to the exterior of a building. So we met with them on April 29th, 2024 and showed them the plans that we've provided you. They went over it with us, and the board that night voted to approve our requested improvements as provided to them, and it's the same place, the plans that we've provided to you. Finally, you know, the requirements for the special permit, for all the special permits we're requesting is again, that the proposed use or structural change, you have to make a finding, is not substantially greater, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which the structural use is located than the existing non-conforming structure. We feel that the parking will be an improvement. You know, right now it's just, just everywhere, and the parking will greatly improve it, including with the landscaping. And we think that by adding the three apartment units, it's not any more detrimental than what's there now. And actually with the improvements to the exterior and again, the landscaping and the parking overall, it will be a great benefit to the downtown and to the neighborhood. So we think that we've met all the requirements in order to get approval of the special permit at this time. Do you have any questions with regard to what I've brought up or of any other plans Chris can, can address?
Let me, let me read into the record the two memos we have first, and then we can go to questions and comments. So the first one is dated March 15th, 2024, from Gabriella Jordan, who's staff planner. Planning board had an informal presentation from the applicants for the multifamily development located at 31-39 South Street at its meeting of March 14th, 2024, respectfully offers the following comments. Board is in support of this concept as it will address a number of concerns. Proposal will provide an adequate amount of off-street parking spaces for the residents of the units and will improve the landscaping within the property. Also, the board is not opposed to the increase of residential units from nine to 12 in the building located at 37-39 South Street, as the applicants have expressed that the conversion of these units from storage space to residential units will allow them to complete the renovations to the building, including improvements to the exterior. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the application. And then we have a copy of a letter dated May 11, 2024, addressed to Mr. Timothy Barber of the Revival Companies. Have you seen this?
Yes, I saw this today, actually.
Dear Mr. Barber, thank you for submitting proposed plans for the renovation of 37-39 South Street to the Town of Foxborough. We appreciate your attention to detail and willingness to maintain the structure and many original features. Specifically, we were told that the decorative eve brackets would remain. Details such as this help to preserve the architecture of a historic building. The elevation facing South Street appears to depict a very standard front porch railing. While there are building code requirements that must be met, we wonder if options have been considered to either maintain the original railing with modifications or to replace the railing with one closer to the original or something typical of the time period. Specifically, in our opinion, wooden turn balusters would be appropriate. Photos are attached for your consideration. As you may be aware, 37-39 South Street has a unique place in the history of Foxborough. Known as American House, it has been used as a post office, home, bank, and venue for town meetings held in the mid-1800s. Due to its proximity to the common Town Hall and Memorial Hall, American House is a prominent feature of Foxborough's uptown neighborhood. We appreciate the work you have done and offer our opinion on the railings as a suggestion for your consideration. Sincerely, Mark Forensick, Chair of the Foxborough Historical Commission, and Robert Capice, Chair of the Foxborough Design Review Board. Again, these are just suggestions. There were, there were no conditions that design review imposed or?
No, we agreed that we would look into it, but it became a kind of a building code issue. I don't know if Chris wants to?
Yeah, so the way that the railings are designed or are installed currently, unfortunately because of the height of them and just the generic, the general spacing of them, it creates more of like a ladder, especially when you think of small children and things like that. So it's something that we definitely need to address with it being a rental, and building code requires it to, you know, not have that kind of space, you know, the maximum is like four, a four-inch space. Those are much, much more, you know, going horizontal as opposed to be in vertical. So unfortunately, it kind of creates a bit of a danger to children and, you know, occupants.
In its current, in its current state, but we can't commit to a time period baluster in the renovations that meet the, meet the building code.
Okay. I mean, none of those are zoning issues anyhow, but I just wanted to, you know, bring everybody's attention. Could you just go through the landscaping plan?
Absolutely. So we actually have two plans here. So this one here with the red is just showing the easements itself. This one here is a little bit cleaner. That will help kind of depict the parking. So currently, this is all paved right here, which this goes into the existing garage bays itself. So what we're saying is we're going to pull the parking lot back a little bit for the, for the first five, I'm sorry, first six spaces, be able to get a little bit of greenery in here, separate the parking from these new units here. So there'd be, the studio unit would be here, the, there'd be a one-bedroom here and then a one-bedroom right here. The two back units would have a little patio area off of their units for some outdoor space. We imagine there'll probably be a little bit of shrubbery and things like that to, to separate the parking from the patios themselves. That way, the parking lot doesn't feel like it's right on top of the units. And then we would have a, we'd have a new curb cut in here off of Market Street, which would access a majority of the parking itself. This area here, again, would be an easement that would be given, you know, to this building as well as this building, is an access and parking easement. Because currently, for 70, I'm sorry, for 37-39, this is the lot line right here for, for 37-39, and for 31-35, it's this area. Then there is an existing easement going back here, so we would, again, would still utilize that so that we could get to the four parking spaces here, which currently there is two that exist underneath the building here. And then it's basically currently all dirt and, you know, most cautious kind of, it's a free-for-all. So we're, you know, proposing this, and this would also allow some additional space for snow removal and things like that in the winter. And then as far as the elevations go, again, we would keep the existing colors that are there, or match them as close as we could, but it'd be hardy, new hardy plank siding. All the trim would be repainted, patched, repaired as needed, as well as, you know, the window detail, the corbels, all that stuff. We would, you know, clean up the railing to make that legal and meet building code. And then on 31-35, we would do the same thing, so we'd keep the same kind of color, do it in a hardy plank siding, paint, paint repair, patch the trim as needed. Most of the windows have already been replaced as part of the initial gut renovation when they were redoing the units as it, as it was, because they want to kind of go in once and not have to go back in a year, deal with tenants, you know, they move in, they're in, and now everything else can be kind of addressed from the exterior and not to, you know, interfere with, with tenants.
Are the parking spaces going to be striped?
Sorry?
Are the parking spaces themselves going to be striped? They're going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that way everybody, you know, knows where they can park, where they can't park, you know, there'll be proper, proper things so that, you know, it is true, you know, a true parking lot, parking spaces, you know, and maximize the greenery as well.
So the people who live at 31-35 will just be parking on that side, or is it again going to be a free-for-all?
No, so I'm, so more than likely, it'll be more of an assigned parking kind of a?
Okay. So let, let me ask the question that I discussed, excuse me, earlier today with Scott. You've got four residential units in 31-35.
Mm-hmm.
You're planning to go from nine to 12 in, in the other building. I don't consider myself a mathematician, but Scott confirmed my, my math, and so did my grandson last night. I, I think you need 24 spaces. Because you've got a total of 12 and one, or, you know, assuming everything's approved, you'll have 12 in, in the 37-39 building, and then you'll have an additional four. That gives you 16, right? 16 times one and a half is 24.
Where are you getting the one and a half?
In Section 9.7.8, minimum parking spaces in the FCOD?
So studio and one-bedroom only require one per unit.
Okay, so?
That's where the difference is. So we, all we need is?
And a majority of the units are studios and ones for the most part.
Right. And all other require 1.5 per unit. And all other require 1.5 per unit. So, there are four units that are more than one-bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
And there are 12 units that are one-bedroom or a studio. So if you can see, we need it between nine and?
Okay.
22.
So, again, I think you mentioned that in the, where you're converting the garage area, one of them is going to be a studio, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think, I think that answers?
One studio here, and then the two called back units will be one-bedroom units.
Okay, that, that answers that question. Okay. Because otherwise, we're going to send you to the planning board.
Back to the planning board.
Just to get rid of one unit. But okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You asked my question, so there's not an option to have assigned spaces per unit specifically? It's going to continue to be open parking?
From a property management standpoint, there will be assigned parking.
Okay. Kim?
I do have a couple of questions, but can I steal those two letters that you just read into the record for a second, please? Thank you. Okay, so, there is a dumpster right now. Where will that go?
We'll, we'll probably have the dumpster somewhere over here in this easement area.
Okay. And, in relation to, there's somewhat of a cement planter or something? I'm just trying to, it's kind of in between, in the back, it might be where, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. I'm just trying to place how far out the parking, the gray is going to go. There's something, when I drove by today, and I was on Market Street, you know, looking at it, but that's okay if you don't know where it is.
So the, so the spaces, so, like, these spaces here?
Yeah.
These are going to be about eight feet off the building?
Okay.
Because the, the patios themselves are going out about five feet, and there'll be about a three-foot buffer from, from the edge of the patio to the parking space itself, so it'll be about eight feet there.
Okay. There looked like there was some sort of a cementish planter thing somewhere in this vicinity. I was just curious how far that, if?
I think, I mean, I, I think it's just like old kind of parking lot, it's been broken up. I think, I think I know what you're talking about.
It's fine. It's just going to help me mentally sort of, you know, place it, but I don't, I don't actually need that. So, right, so the new units are going to be, looking at 37-39, the new units are 10, 11, and 12?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, okay, you already answered that one, you already answered that one. And there's an exterior staircase for 37.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to remain?
Correct.
Right? And pretty much in the same configuration?
Yes.
It's going to remain? Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm situated. Thank you. That's all for now.
Okay, Laurie?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Kurt, any questions?
So the existing footprint of the building is not being expanded at all?
No.
And as far as the units themselves, are they, is there like a central boiler, or is it individual heat and, like HVAC per unit?
It is now individual.
Okay. So it'll be the same with the new units?
Same.
Okay. That's all I got.
Scott, any questions?
You spoke about building code on the decks, and thank you for that. If approved tonight, also, I would highly recommend that you do a Chapter 34 in regards to a sprinkler system. Because now, when you go over certain unitside on the E, International Existing Building Code, you might be at a level two or a level three, which may require a sprinkler system. I'm going to, I spoke to the deputy chief today, he's going to push hard for a sprinkler system. So, if you can give us some documentation where it's not required, that's a Chapter 34 under the code review.
Yep.
I, I'm thinking it's going to need it, because you're increasing the, the, um, unit numbers. So, you're over that four units, I think it's four or greater is going to require. So now you're into the 12 unit, but that has nothing to do with this. I just wanted to make you aware publicly. Just be aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
You did a nice job on the interior, by the way.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I just said, what are the garage units being used for at the moment?
Just general storage, property management supplies, light bulbs.
So it's not for the tenants at this point?
Not for any tenants.
Gotcha.
How many parking spaces are there now, or is it just, you just squeeze everybody in?
Parking spaces currently?
Yeah.
It's tough to estimate, I would, it's, there's no, there's no method to the madness right now, but?
It depends, is it the middle of the summer, or the middle of the winter?
In the winter, with the snow removal, it gets to be, we lose a few spaces, but my estimate is 13.
Okay.
I, I asked Bill Buckley at Bay Colony to give me an estimate, and he said, it's going to be a guess. But he says, we're definitely going up in spaces, you know, by a good amount.
I'm just like, curious.
And again, they're moving, like, right now, they're parking right against the building by Bay Colony, and that's an easement, you know, you're not supposed to be parking there. So what they've done is, they've taken the, um, the asphalt out there, and they're going to make that green space now. You know, so nobody can park there anymore, right beside their building, right beside Bay Colony group on that building. So they've moved it around, so they've lost some, but then they've added a lot more in other areas. And just a little bit about the landscaping. We will be going back in front of the planning board, we'll ask for a waiver on the site plan review, because again, we're just doing interior work, and then just repaving and striping. So, but, we're doing over 1,000 square feet, so we have to ask for a site, for a waiver on that. But at that time, we'll also kind of have them review and vote on the landscaping plan, since that's really under their, you know, jurisdiction. So, you know, we've done one right here, but we're going to get that approved by the planning board. Also, again, with the design review committee, if we want to do any changes on the exterior, we have to go back to them for approval. So I would just ask, you know, many times on our decision, you put in there that we can't change, we have to do it as designed. If they run into any issues, we'd like to just have to go back to that design review committee and have them sign off on it, so we don't have to come back to this board also. Because you don't know, when you start taking something off a facade, you never know what you're going to run into.
Kurt, you started asking a question, I think.
Yeah, I was saying that you're going to have to change the windows on the garage portion, so would you have to go before the planning board for that, like you just mentioned?
Not changing the windows, no.
You're not changing the window, oh, the?
No, if we change the windows, you don't have to go in front of the planning board.
Okay.
But we do have to go in front of them to get, they could, you know, in theory, make us do site plan review, but we're just doing interior work and paving, so we're going to ask them to waive that, which they can do. But at that time, we've also committed to them that we're going to come in and get them to sign off and make a condition as, for any waiver, if they give it to us, that the landscape plan will be done according to their approval.
Frank, could you just walk through again, so we get everything straight, the specific requests?
Yep.
I bent Scott's ear this morning, and I want to make sure that, as much as some of the questions now have any answer, I got everything right.
Yep. So with regard to the parking, we need a special permit from Section 521, and 521 talks about change or substantial extension of use, again, of pre-existing non-conforming use. The parking is a use, it's pre-existing non-conforming, because it's everywhere and anywhere, and doesn't meet any of our requirements under the bylaw, pretty much. So another, in order to change that or substantially extension of that use, we need a special permit from this board, which this board has given before under O6-06. We need one for each of the structures, so that's why there's two there. With regard to converting 37-39 South Street from a nine-family dwelling use to a 12-family dwelling use, we need that same approval, because we're changing or substantially extension of the use. We're going from a nine, uh, nine-unit multifamily to a 12-unit multifamily. So we need 521 for that. But additional, since we're going to be changing the interior of the structure, we need approval under 5.3.2, which states that special permit is required for alteration or structural change of, or to a non-conforming structure that results in the non-conforming structure being used for the same purpose, or used in substantially different manner, or to a substantially greater extent. So we're using it as a multifamily, the same use, but we're going from nine to 12. Is that a substantially increase? Who knows? We're just asking for it, because it just makes sense. So we need two, to increase from nine to 12, and we need one special permit each for, each of the buildings for the change to the parking.
And then, under 5.3.2, we would need a finding under 5.3.5. Again, as to not being substantially more detrimental.
Well, that's the, we don't need, I don't think we need a special permit under that, that's just telling you what the criteria is.
We would need a finding under, a finding under 5.3.5.
Oh, okay, yep. That's the reference.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I just had one question about the parking, since it's an existing non-conforming use. Are you aware of a history of any issues, accidents, things like that, with the way it's currently set up?
We took over management a year and a half ago, and we've had no accidents since we've been managing the property.
Okay. And it's obviously planned to be an improvement to the parking, so I was just curious if there's been any history there in the property.
We're unaware of any, prior loss, management.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Eric?
No.
Okay, I want to have a motion to close the whole portion of the hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Okay. You know, one of the objectives, goals of the EDC is, Kurt and Bahrain will recall, is to revitalize the downtown. And, you know, certainly, anytime you're improving a building that it was in sore need of being improved, and bringing additional people in, you know, to reside there, I think it goes towards revitalization. So, I, I think, from the perspective of what you're, you're planning and what you're, have been doing so far, that's been a benefit, you know, to the town, and I think what you're, again, planning and proposing will, you know, continue to be a benefit. So, as far as the parking, you know, the question that I had has obviously been answered. So I think that you fully meet the requirements under Section 5.2.1. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental than, than what currently exists. So I would propose that we grant the special permit for the parking, subject to the condition that it be as shown on the, on the parking plan. Want to make a motion?
Uh, yes, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any other comments?
Are, are we doing both at the same time?
I want to do them separately.
Separately, okay. That was my only question.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any other comments, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? I think under, for 37-39, and again, this was a subject of a conversation that, that Scott and I had today, and, as Frank, you remember, we, you, you met with, with Gabby and Scott and I, probably about six weeks ago, maybe a little bit more, just to talk about what sections we would need to come under. I, I think we can just deal with Section 5.2.1. If you feel that 5.3.2 is also necessary, I don't have any problem with that, but I think 5.2.1 would be sufficient.
Whatever the board wants. When we met, I did not list that.
Yeah.
And then when the three of us went through it?
Yeah, we?
We thought, okay, you know what I mean? We think we probably need that, we're not sure, let's do it anyway.
Yeah. Now, the reason I'm questioning whether 5.3.2, you know, really applies, is, is language in here about not increasing an existing non-conformity. And, the fact that we're only permitted to have eight dwelling units on a lot, we've already got nine, now we're increasing that non-conformity. When Scott and I talked about it earlier today, I think we tied ourselves into knots, but we, we agreed that really what 5.3.2 is dealing with is dimensional non-conformities, and not the, the numbers of units. But I'm not sure I want to go that far. So I think we can just, if, if you feel comfortable with it, just give you the special permit under 5.2.1. You see the last?
Yep.
Sort of clause in there?
Mm-hmm. If you feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the intent of the bylaw is just to deal with dimensional non-conformities, but because?
Again, initially, I didn't think we needed this.
Yeah.
And we talked about it.
Yeah.
I was like, sure.
You caught us by surprise that day, so.
Um.
So if, if you're comfortable just going with 5.2.1, I think I'd rather do it that way, so as not to?
But again, my only comment is that, it's talking about structural non-conformities. What you just talked about was a use non-conformity.
Yep.
So that's, that's the difference with regard to the non-conformity. And here, it does not increase an existing non-conformity. We're talking about structures, we're not increasing any structural non-conformities.
Right.
And that's why I still feel we need it.
So you still feel, okay.
But if you don't think we need it, then I don't think we need it.
Okay, so what do we, I mean, as far as the use itself, we, we can just do 5.2.1. And as far as the structure, I think I would agree then, 5.3.2.
Is needed or not needed?
Um, let's do it just to be safe.
Okay.
Okay.
Because again, 5.2 is uses.
Yeah.
5.3 is structures. And so 5.2, you're taking care of the use non-conformity.
Right.
So the, the non, not increasing an existing non-conformity is just talking about the structure.
So let's do, yeah, Eric, go ahead.
Talking about like the reconstruction portion as it relates to the garage?
No, for example, it, all the setbacks?
Yeah.
Do not meet.
Right.
So if we were going to bump out the garages?
Right.
That's increasing the non-conformity.
Right.
On the structure. So we're not increasing the non-conformity of the structure at all, because we're just doing the work inside the structure itself.
So we, we need 5.2.1 to go from nine to 12?
We definitely need that.
And, I, I think, yeah, you're right. We do, we probably do need 5.3.2 with the finding under 5.3.5.
Again, originally, I didn't think so. We all sat down, we talked about it, we said, we think we need that. I said, that's fine, and I put it in. And I think the non-conformity in 5.3.2 just goes to structures, because that section talks about structures, the previous section talks about uses.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. That's where I, I think?
I can't remember, pardon.
Yeah, we tied ourselves up.
Well, you can tie yourself in circles.
So you were, you were hungry too, I mean, anyway.
I'm always hungry, pardon.
I got you just before lunch. So, let me suggest then that we?
Makes sense.
Grant a special permit under Section 5.2.1 to increase the number of units at 37-39 South Street from nine to 12, as has been proposed.
And shown on the plans provided.
Yeah. And that would be the, really entirety of the plans that you've, you know, provided.
Yep. All the plans are as built, except for those, what, what unit numbers were they?
Uh, 10, 11, 12.
Except 10, 11, 12?
Those are the proposed units.
Okay.
So they're shown on the plan, the plan shows all the changes as have been occurred, that have been signed off by the building commissioner.
It was just my, technically, it was my modifications, I think you did some interior work, and HVAC, and all that other stuff, so it wasn't our major work, not really reconfiguring space. So it all came out really nice.
But should be according, for those three units, according to those plans?
It'll be new space, yep.
Okay, want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
And then a special permit under Section, and that will, you know, again, the, the special permit plus the finding under 5.2.1, that it's not substantially more detrimental. And a special permit under Section 5.3.2 with a finding under Section 5.3.5, that the, again, the alteration of the structure is not substantially? that the, again, the alteration of the structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing. Subject to the condition as shown, again, in the plans.
And I probably would recommend that, subject to the planning board signing off on the landscaping plan. Because again, if we get the site plan review waiver, which we hope and anticipate, I'd want them to sign off on any.
Okay.
Planted plan.
So again.
And we, we told them that we'd do that, too.
So again, it'll be conditioned, you know, on the plans themselves and subject to planning approval of the landscaping plan that's been presented. Okay?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Okay. This property has gone through a lot, as Frank knows. And I think as Lorraine and Kurt probably remember, that's why Joe Lynch wanted to tear those buildings down and put up a mix of use.
He wanted to save them. He wanted to tear them down. He tried to do everything and it just couldn't work out. So one of the things that is different than all the other ones is we now have that overlay district downtown. Whereas, I don't know, if you remember, Barney, when we came in before, we needed variances in order to do what he wanted. If he wanted, if he was trying to do what he was proposing back then, he wouldn't need them. He could do it, you know, with that overlay district. So that overlay district.
Yeah.
Really allows real development downtown, you know. Otherwise, those setbacks and all that are very, very hard.
And this satisfies the historical commission? It satisfies the design review board and?
Yep. And that's one of the reasons why we missed a month coming in here. Because, you know, I wanted to get in front of the design review board prior to coming in here, just in case there was any kind of issues. Not that I anticipated any, but you never know. You know, I wanted them to sign off on the exterior before coming in front of you.
Is it on sewer?
Yes.
Yes. You'll have to go in front of DPW. Extra three bedrooms. The extra three. So. You might want to reach out to them.
Parking on Market Street?
Prior to coming in, because I'll send it in my application, but they're going to want.
There are roads in kind of, has like a big.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Kim, I'd just like to put my two cents in that. Thank you for all your time and service. You know, you've been a good member on the board. And I think, I've always thought this has been one of the best boards in town in all the years I've worked here. So I just want to thank you for your, your time and effort. And, you know, hopefully, no one else is leaving, because we need consistency.
We'll see about that.
We need members, too, if you'd like to join.
We'll get to that in a minute.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you guys. Thank you very much. Okay. To bring people up to date on a couple of things. Minutes first. Any questions? Motion to approve?
All right. Move it. We approve the minutes.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Number one, the town has hired an individual who will be the director of land use and economic development. Her name is Catherine Fierich. She's currently the land use director in Attleboro. I had the opportunity to interview her. Very pleasant, enthusiastic individual. I think she'll be a welcome addition to the town. Do you have a chance to meet her, Diana?
Just to say hello.
Just say hello? And so you haven't met her, have you? Okay. She starts on June the 10th. Pat Costello, who has been town council for a number of years, is retiring at the end of June. Four law firms have responded to the RFP. I had the opportunity, per Paige's request, to review their various proposals, and I gave her my comments. And I know that Paige and Bill Yupner interviewed two of them today, and I think they're interviewing two others on Monday. And ultimately, the decision will be the select boards, but I'm sure they'll base it in large part on Paige's recommendation.
When is he retiring?
End of June.
Okay.
So.
Can you tell us the firms?
Yep. If I remember, Harrington Heap, which, all of them are town council in a number of towns.
Gotcha.
Another Harrington Heap is town council in Norfolk, in Blackstone, in Grafton, and a bunch of others. Coppelman, well, what used to be Coppelman and Page is now KP Law.
Okay.
And they're town council in about a third of the cities and towns in Massachusetts.
Oh, no kidding. Wow.
Murphy, Hess, Tumey and Lehane, which, again, is town council in a number of communities. The individual who they have proposed as the lead council has also done some work for this town as far as licensing. And the fourth firm is Mead, Tallerman and Costa, which, among other towns, is town council in Rantham. So again, I don't know who Paige interviewed today, but there were two today and two on Monday. Scott and I are going to be meeting with Pat in about a week and a half, hopefully come up with some ideas to offer as a settlement of the two Jeff Cook litigation matters.
Okay.
I was hoping tonight, that, I was hoping last month and a month before, that we'd be able to deal with the Moore Street appeal. You know, again, we were told a couple of months ago that the thing was settled, but they still haven't finalized everything. When and if they finally do, the comprehensive permit's going to be, need to be modified. In what respect, I don't know, because I don't know what the settlement's going to be. I have an idea, but I just don't know for certain. We have two candidates for what soon will be an associate member position. One of them, Blair, do you want to come up?
Sure.
Blair Crane is the DPW director in Norfolk.
Yes.
And has submitted an application, as has Catherine Rollins. And I think, Ray, Kurt, you probably, I don't know if you've ever met her in person. She's on the EDC, but I don't think we ever had any meetings in person.
Okay, yeah. I have the name something.
So, you know, Catherine has also submitted an application. She's not, she was not enabled to come tonight because of a scheduling conflict. I'm going to try to find out, hopefully, early next week from Paige Duncan, how she wants to handle the process. Ultimately, it's the select board's decision. But I'll see what she wants to do, whether she wants us to have a formal interview process or what have you. But.
Having multiple candidates is a great problem to have.
So Blair is the vice chair of the stadium advisory committee.
Yes, I am.
I'll let you introduce yourself and talk.
Yes. Vice chair of the stadium advisory committee. I sit on a variety of boards throughout the Commonwealth. Sit on the executive board of the Massachusetts Tree Wardens and Foresters Association. Member of the Mass Highway Association. So I do a few of those types of things. But my daily gig, so to speak, is as the director of public works for the town of Norfolk. Been in that position now for about, going on six years here now. My predecessor to that job had been in the job for 15 years, give or take. So it's certainly one of those jobs without a lot of turnover. But I came to Norfolk from the Berkshires, where I had the same position out there. So a lot more rural than living on this side of the river, so.
Norfolk's the big city compared to the.
Yes, absolutely. You wouldn't have thought so last night with everything going on, but.
4% increase in the town.
Yes. I was able to keep my budget at just, just over 0.1% for the coming year. So that was a bright spot. But not easy to do with inflation and the way things are going. But a lot of concerns in the community. I work with the Norfolk Planning Board, ZBA, certainly a variety of boards, town councils across the board. So certainly no stranger to not just sitting in a board environment, but working with the Board of Selectmen on a fairly constant basis. Town administrators, working through, you know, local government and all the problems and issues that come with that. Small town like Norfolk, you know, there's a large contingent of people that want it to always be that way. And then there's a fairly large influx, as we saw last night, of people that want it to change and to grow and to change with the times. So it's, it can be tough being a civil servant in a community like that where, you know, there's definitely a sharp line between the two and to try to find that common ground. And never more evident than it was last night, a two-houred select board meeting discussing everything going on with migrants and the state and what's going to happen at the old prisons there. So I certainly understand how it all works. And I think I have a really good rapport with residents. I can relate to residents and do it on a daily basis. So that's my spiel, Barney. That's.
I had a, probably a 40 or 45-minute conversation on the telephone with Blair a couple of weeks ago. So my questions were answered in every regard, but I'll let everybody, go ahead.
Well, I think there's been an occasion to have a sharp line happen in Foxborough every once in a while, too.
I'm sure.
Was there ever? I'm just curious. Ever, like a reuse plan for the prison of mine Norfolk?
Officially, they were shut down because we, I've been part of a plan over the last year to work on a plan for downtown sewer. Norfolk has about 96% of all of their septic is private and recharge and with a very small septic system up behind the town hall. So I was tasked with going into researching a downtown sewer. And part of that research ended up with the possibility of possibly putting a forced main all the way down Main Street to the prison. Part of that discussion with DOC was to utilize some of their capacity because they had shut down those other two prisons. And it was a win-win. It would have been a win for the town. Obviously, it would have been easier for us to do that. And it would have taken some of the cost burden off the prison system. Through those discussions, there was some wavering back and forth, I think, from one time or another. And, you know, it's a negotiation that goes on. So I don't know if there was ever a true means of shutting them down altogether or doing something different with the land. You know, they had shut them down, but I think they were reluctant to clearly mothball them. But answers have been difficult to come by. So it's, we'll learn more as, you know, things progress here and as we go through the summer, but.
Is there more than just one facility that's shut?
There was two of them. Yeah, there was, one of them's actually in Walpole.
Okay.
And then, so you had Walpole, Cedar Junction, and then the MCI Norfolk, the bigger facilities.
The one on 1A that you see, that's.
Right. That's the one on 1A that's technically just over the Walpole line. So that one sits in Walpole. And then if you come around, like you're heading to, take that left at the traffic light, there's the, there's the two, the two of them, right? There's a small one and then the large one on the corner.
Right, right. Okay. So the larger one on 1A, that's, that one's shut? The one on Walpole?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Yeah. And honestly, I think it was getting to the point where it was pretty old. And, you know, would have taken a fair amount of money to keep it where it needed to be for its, for the use that it had then. And so.
And is that Walpole, the new ballpark they built across the street?
Yes.
That's a nice facility.
Yeah. The, actually, we've been in discussions, the old hospital is just to the south of that. The old Southwood Hospital, which is, that's in Norfolk. So the town line is literally right there.
Is there a plan for that?
Yeah, there's been a few plans for that, actually. There's talk, a couple of developments there. I think that there's.
Light every day, that's why I'm asking.
Right. There's some, I believe there's some chemical issues that need to be dealt with there from the old hospital and that sort of. So they've been looking to develop it. There's been discussions, there's a, the old railroad tracks are behind there, the Metacomic Greenway. So there have been discussions with doing that. We looked at, to get into a little bit of zoning with the MBTA zoning bylaw change that passed last night in Norfolk. Part of that downtown Ponville area does meet the criteria for some of that. So there was a zone installed down there last night.
For the MBTA?
The MBTA, yeah. So that's, and all of that is included with the Metacomic Greenway, which actually goes all the way up into Walpole, behind those athletic fields and links all that together. So there's a lot going on down there. It's really Norfolk's only viable commercial area.
Yeah, yeah.
So to speak, you know, land is hard to come by in Norfolk. There's a lot of wetland and, and so it's.
And is the facility in Walpole, is that being turned into housing for the, like, the.
If you have the answer to that, you'll be the first one. Unfortunately, you know, we literally just learned about it last week on Friday and Saturday. So like I said, details have been really, really difficult to come by. And I think that, you know, we're having some meetings in town, but still, still more questions than answers, unfortunately.
I think everyone learned about it on the six o'clock news.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it's, so it's getting plenty of attention, but, you know, the timing of it, you know, a week before town meeting, that's tough timing. So it's, we'll see how it goes. It's, it'll be ever-evolving, for sure.
Will they have to do renovations?
Absolutely, yeah.
Probably.
There's barbed wire that needs to come down. There's, yeah, I'm sure that there's dormitories inside. They say it's 450 people. Talking to the fire chief, I've never been in there, but I had talked to the Norfolk Fire Chief last night. You know, he says that you could easily double that in capacity if you had to.
They will.
But, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the capacities are. I've never been in there, so it's just pure conjecture on my part. But we'll find out. We'll find out. It's, it'll be an adventure, for sure, and one that's, hasn't been received very well. So move forward. But sorry to see you go, Kim. It looks like this is something you've enjoyed for a long time.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And I really cannot recommend the board enough. It's a really great, great space to.
I've done my homework. I would not have volunteered for the position had I, you know, it's, being in public service, you learn. You learn quickly to volunteer for things that you think that you'll enjoy. And I think that they have a great, great board here, so. But sorry to see you go and wish you the best.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, she'll be moving. That's the real reason.
Right.
Once you find something.
Yes. TBD.
So, you know, again, I don't know what the process is going to be. My guess is, as you indicated, when you and I spoke, it would probably, the select board probably want a letter from you and the other candidate explaining why, and then, you know, obviously bring you in. They probably want us to, you know, have a formal interview.
Sure.
But, you know, I'll see. There's really no urgency at this point. I think, as I mentioned to you when we spoke, I really think this year is going to be kind of light for us.
Yeah.
We have nothing so far for next month. Yes, Scott?
Right.
But, you know, so there's no, you know, rush. It's not as if we've got something huge coming up that's going to take, you know, months of work. So my guess is probably towards the end of June, you know, into July is when the process will start. I'll keep you advised.
Great.
You know, as to where we are, where we're going, you know, what's going to be required and.
I'm sure I'll be around and busy.
Go from there.
By the sounds of it, just my calendar just started to get full again. So, yeah, absolutely.
Start with the stadium stuff.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Tom Brady's Hall of Fame in a couple of weeks. So, yeah. Few weeks. But, yeah. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, any of you. I'm around every day. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Great.
Nice to be here.
Nice to meet you. Have a great evening.
As I said, nothing so far for June. If something does come in, I'm on vacation that week.
Hell.
Do you want to chair a meeting? You'll want to try to reschedule it if we do get something.
I'd rather reschedule it.
Okay. So Diana? What'd you find out?
Let me count my calendar.
The 20th?
Well, that's what I kind of wanted to ask. So, so we would have met on the 20th. The zoning, the planning board is scheduled to be on the 27th. So would people be available on the 26th?
Which is a Wednesday.
That's in July?
June.
Oh, June. Okay, June. All right.
So just bumping it out a week?
Six days.
Six days, yeah.
I think that should be fine. Am I in?
You know, again, that's assuming we get something.
Sure.
Nothing's hanging around, anybody's hanging around saying anything?
I'm trying not to get in trouble. I've been in trouble enough.
Nobody with garages, though? Nobody with garages, though?
Those threats lately.
So.
Nothing that I, that I know is pending, no.
So we'll plan on June 26th if we do get anything.
Okay.
And again, I'm just hoping that there's something on Moore Street and we can get that taken care of pretty, pretty quickly, so. And that would not require a hearing, again, it would determine whether any of the modifications to the permit are substantial or insubstantial.
And as far as the Cook versus Cook thing, is that just going to go on?
Well, again, we'll see what we can come up with. The other attorney had reached out, the attorney representing Cook had reached out to Pat Costello and said, you know, hope we can resolve both matters.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's good.
See what we can do.
And Oilman?
I said to Pat the other night, or he said to me, that he, he can't understand why that has, that hasn't been settled, but it's people, so. So we'll have, I don't know what's going to happen there. They haven't done anything in the way of discovery, which they should be doing, so I don't know what's going to happen.
Was he sick or something like that? Is that what Jeff said?[1736.64]